Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection.
We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 3, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to items to be presented. We have a presentation by Eric Nemeth and Ezio Altamora presenting the NGIF Safety Incentive Award.
Well, good evening. I'm Ezio Altamora from the Honor City Insurance Agency. I am your city's risk manager, and Eric Nemeth from the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund, the attorney. We are here tonight to present to the mayor and council this plaque for a safety award. This is actually the, at least since 2017, every year, the city of Asbury Park has received a safety award for their safety record, for their contribution to the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. Their frequency and just severity of claims have gone down consistently, at least since I've been appointed, since 2017. So tonight, we congratulate them for being a safe community, and we hope that the mayor and the council keep up the good work with all your department members, and your city managers, Donna Piero, who does an excellent job, by the way. So let's hear it for the mayor and council.
You can go by the mayor.
I'll be on my new councilboard.
Where's the check?
You have the check, by the way, yes. I failed to say that the check came last month.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, mayor. Donna, thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the line.
No? All right, thank you very much.
Let me just say quickly, this is one thing that is in black and white that anybody can look at our records at and see how much our premiums have dropped since Ezio and his firm has been on Eric, and how much we've saved the taxpayers by engaging your firm. So thank you again very, very much.
Over $600,000 in savings since 2017.
Which is unbelievable. So, thank you again.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric and Ezio. We're now on to special event applications.
The first application before you is a request from the Springwood Avenue Rising Committee to use the council chambers on the 13th for a roundtable discussion. And the 32 applications after that are all requests to use city property for weddings during the 2023 calendar year. Are there any questions on these applications?
I don't believe so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Donna, I think I sent an email. They made a request to AP TV to try to tape it, so I don't know that we have the resources to do it, but I...
To tape what?
To tape the event on Friday at council chambers. I sent an email that passed along to Nate.
Okay, I'll talk to you after the news.
Sure.
We are now on to matters from city council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Just good evening, everyone. I know it's a little chilly out there, but it's nice to see all of your beautiful, warm faces. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that the Boys and Girls Club will be holding swimming lessons on Saturdays from January 14 through February 18 for adults and for children. The fee is $25 per person, and to sign up, you can get in touch with Leisha Floyd at City Hall.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Good evening. I just want to remind everybody that this weekend, we celebrate Martin Luther King and his accomplishments, and say this is an opportunity. There are a number of programs throughout the community and the county, and it's an opportunity to observe his anniversary, and also that there are a number of opportunities to volunteer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
I'm just going to follow up on what Eileen said and thank the recreation committee. And Leisha, I know this is our second time doing the swimming lessons for kids in Asbury Park, so greatly, greatly appreciated that you guys are doing it again.
Mayor Moore.
Not very good time. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now into public participation. May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
May I have a second to open the meeting?
Oh, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. There would be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address.
Hi, Carrie Martin, Second Avenue. I wanted to comment about on the stop for pedestrian bollards that are on Memorial Drive, or I should say were on Memorial Drive. They were removed a couple weeks ago, the reason being that the, quote, "The city has to prepare for winter storms," which means clearing the roadways of all signage so they are not hit by plows or hydroplaning vehicles. So, what I get from that is the city is taking away an object that offers some pedestrian safety of crossing Memorial Drive. I'm not saying these bollards are miracle workers. What we really need is infrastructure improvement to Memorial Drive, but at least it's something. I feel like cars at least, like, possibly will stop for you with a bollard there, and when they're not there, I feel like there's no chance. I know you can't really rely on them. They could occasionally be moved, or broken, or stolen, but again, at least it's something. What bothers me is that a decision was made... Oh, bollards. Amy, are you describing what bollards are? What bothers me is that a decision was made that this was a good idea, like, let's take these things out in the winter, just in case, like, just in case there's a snowstorm. I mean, it seems like you just got a safety award, but it seems like you're not prioritizing the safety of people. You're prioritizing the safety of our plows or of people's cars. And just off on this, the chance that there's a snowstorm, and couldn't they be removed a couple days before? People walk all year long in Asbury Park. It's not just in the summer, and especially in the winter, it's like short days, it gets dark earlier. So I think this is just a really irresponsible decision, and I'm asking for them to be put back in, and would like to know your opinion of this decision. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and this is something that I probably say all the time. If somebody sees something wrong, please call us, text us, do something. I didn't know this decision was made. Now that you mention it, you're right, I came down Fourth Avenue today, I didn't see him. So I don't know who made the decision. I agree with you, and what happens is we have no snow all winter. So I agree with you, but anybody, not just I'm not picking on you, Carrie, but anybody that sees something out there, don't wait two weeks for a council meeting. Soon as you see something wrong going down, call us, and we can, like, hopefully...
But call who, actually? Do I report a concern, or do...
You can call...
I mean, I've actually reported them missing over time, and they might appear, but actually, who do you, who would you suggest I call?
Well, you can go to the city website.
Yeah, and I believe, Carrie, in this instance, you did email me or James, and I think we did respond to you about the policy that's been in place for quite a while of removing these during the snow. So Carrie did reach out to us?
I wasn't actually on that email thread.
Okay, I thought you were. I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah, so, you know, in the future, we do have notify me, or we have the application, and everything that goes there is responded by a city staff member, so that's probably the best way. You can always email me as well.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
You can call, email me also.
Okay.
Hi, Michael Kushner, 1100 Fifth Avenue. First of all, hello, everyone. Happy New Year. Angela, welcome.
Thank you.
Just expanding on what Carrie just spoke about, I was on that email. Polly, myself, and some others did reach out to you, Donna, also to the transportation manager, and we were given that response. So John, what is our recourse if we say we don't agree with that decision, it was unilaterally done, and frankly, it was, like, really stupid? I Googled it, and Asbury Park gets maybe four to five days a year of any significant snowstorm. So to remove a safety device for maybe snow where plows come out even half a dozen days in the winter, which is a bad winter for us, you know, I don't want to belabor the point with superlatives, but things came up, like, what? Really? Say what? You kidding me? It's just, it's just mind-boggling. People are walking all year round. So we were given a response that we just don't find is really adequate. So what's our recourse there? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and again, recourse is what you're doing tonight, bringing it to our attention. And again, I'm surprised I wasn't on any of these emails, because usually when you guys send something, the entire council's on them. So how we got cut out, I don't know. Again, you all have my phone number, you all have our email addresses, and, you know, again, we don't totally agree with some things made by the administration. We could have a discussion about it. And one thing I'm going to say, Michael, I hope you didn't jinx us, saying we only have four or five days of snow in winter, because now, if we get, like, two months of blizzards, I'm going to say you jinxed us. But no. Again, I'm shocked you tell me about all these emails when I get, like, Polly, I get 10 emails a week from you. So here's one, here's one that I didn't get from anybody. I mean, so include me the next time.
Definitely will be.
Thank you. And I agree with you, and I'm hoping we don't, hoping you didn't jinx us with the snow. Okay, Rita.
Hi, Rita Moreno. Have a few questions. Have you decided on the historical ordinance yet? Or are you working on it? That's one. Number two is, I agree with this gentleman here. Nobody works together. You have to have a meeting where everybody has to work together. I had an incident yesterday where I had this homeless man cross the street from me. The police came a few times, but nothing happened. So I decided to call social services. Soon as I called, they were on the job. I mean, like, the police have to work with social. Everybody has to work together, and it's the same way with COs. Nobody works together. You don't know who's got a CO, who doesn't have one, and nobody cares. I think you have to have a meeting of all city employees and tell them that they all have to work together. That's very important. And this gentleman's right. Nobody works together. If you call certain departments, you get results. But why should we have to call? There's enough people working here that, you know, they should know their job. And I didn't see any bill resolution. Is there a bill resolution? No bill resolution?
No.
Is it on here?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
What's going on?
You complained it was 200 pages long, so we're going to do one a year, make it 20,000 pages.
No, I wasn't complaining.
I'm only kidding you, Rita. It's the first time I remember there not being a bill resolution, and there'll be a double one at the next meeting.
Uh-oh. That's bad news.
Yeah, okay.
But I, you know, you really have to work on the historical society, I think, and get that together so we can have a historical district, which we always had one, but I don't know. And I'm getting my street done. They marked it up.
Yeah, it's in the progress, but the historical preservation is in its infancy, and it's going to start picking up speed through Jim's been involved, Pam, the Historical Society, other people, Barbara Krasak. We started this last year, and then it just, like, got pushed to the side, so it's going to be brought back. I know Angela wanted to be part of it.
Yes.
So give us a little bit of time. It's going to start. It's going to happen. We want to do it the right way. We don't want to rush into anything where it backfires, where they could say, oh, I want to put Rita's house on the Historical Society, and you have no say in it. So there's a lot to it. We're working on it, and you'll hear more in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And happy New Year.
And happy New Year to you.
Hi, everybody. Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. I'm here again with a young reporter from town. She's live streaming the meeting. So Lauren Nadel is brand-new to the Asbury Park Reporter. And anybody else who wants to earn some money and be a community journalist, just get in touch with us on asburyparkreporter.com. I have a question about the resolution where you are holding Madison Marquette in default. As a result, if this resolution passes, what happens then? What happens as a result of holding Madison Marquette in default? Does that mean that the contract will end? Does it mean that there's another company that you would consider? Does it mean that you're hoping that a lot of the promises that they made will be put on the front burner rather than the back burner? So that's my question about, it's about the resolution about holding Madison Marquette in default.
Okay, that's all your questions and comments? Okay. Mr. Marazidi, the redevelopment attorneys here, I'm going to let him answer that question.
Good evening. My name is Joe Marazidi. I'm with the firm of Marazidi Falcon. We are the redevelopment attorneys for the city of Asbury in the waterfront redevelopment area. My partner, Joanne Voss, is with me this evening, and your questions are excellent of what happens next. And so the first step, when there is a default, is to give a notice under the agreement. It's provided for in the, what we call the subsequent developer agreement that brought Madison Asbury Retail into Asbury Park in 2010. Madison Asbury Retail is a subsidiary of Madison Marquette, a well-funded, I understand, multinational company that's based in Washington. And so we have been in dialogue with them over time. We have had some meetings that have produced some responses. Over last summer, there were changes that were made, minor changes, not the big ones that we want, but they did respond and came to the table as a result of the notices of default we sent last year. These notices of default that are authorized tonight, if the resolution is adopted, refer to the Casino Building and the Power, the Powerhouse. The other notices of default that were adopted about a year and a half ago dealt with the Convention Hall Complex, which is the convention hall of the Grand Arcade and Paramount Theater. It dealt with the Pavilion, Sunset Pavilion in particular. It dealt with the Splash Park, and it dealt with the failure to give a progress report to the city, and it dealt with the failure to give a certification of their net worth of the company, which must always be certified to be 30 million or no less. We withdrew two of those notices of default, that having to do with the progress report and the certification of net worth guarantee, because they responded. That's what you like to see happen when a notice of default is issued. Now, specifically to your question, what happens? The redevelopment agreement, or the subsequent development agreement is what it's called, provides that there are, there's a cure period, variously referred to as a 35-day period or a 45-day period. The agreement says if the default is one that cannot be cured in that time period, then the, the party, in this case Madison Asbury Retail, has a reasonable time to cure the default. A good example of defaults that could be cured within 30 or five or 45 days are the two that I mentioned that they honored. That is the delivery of the progress report and the delivery of the certification of net worth guarantee. Obviously, the other types of defaults, having to do with the failure to operate, maintain, repair, conventional art, complex, pavilions, take longer. One of the pavilions was painted as a result of the, I think it's the Fourth Avenue Pavilion was painted as a result of the notice of default. A fence was put around Sunset Pavilion because of the notices of default. The Splash Park was somewhat operated, but we didn't withdraw that notice. So there's a mixed bag of responses. Now, in this case, we, we know that it is, it is not possible in 45 days to cure the problems with respect to the Casino Building or the Powerhouse. So there's going to be a period of analysis as to what their reaction will be. We have to, we have to operate in good faith and give the party here the opportunity to step forward and hope that they will. If they do not, the agreement provides remedies that are set forth in the document, always difficult to obtain, but there are remedies that can be considered by the council of terminating the designation as the redeveloper. The Madison Asbury Retail, you all know, I think, owns the building, so they would still own the buildings if they were, even if they were terminated as the redeveloper. Possibly a remedy of specific performance, getting the court to order them to specifically step up to their obligations, or the other alternative is to sue for damages. So these are all the alternatives that may be considered when and if the time comes.
Thank you, Mr. Marazidi. Anybody else like to be heard? If not, a motion to close?
Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now closed. We're now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of December 21st, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
I now have the municipal council reorganizational meeting minutes of January 1, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 202369, a resolution approving special event application.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202370, a resolution authorizing membership with the Keystone Purchasing Network Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202371, a resolution authorizing the purchase of an electronic digital message center sign for City Sunset Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202372, a resolution authorizing the purchase of various computers and accessories needed for citywide computer replacement.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202373, a resolution authorizing purchase of firearms equipment and supplies for the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202374, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a steam cleaner for the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202375, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a surf rake for the Beach Department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202376, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Rabo street sweeper.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202377, a resolution authorizing the purchase of additional parking pay stations.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202378, a resolution authorizing the purchase of three police vehicles and related equipment needed.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202379, a resolution awarding of a contract to Millennium Communications Group for camera replacement at Adams Street.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202380, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Mazza Recycling for the processing and disposition of recyclable materials.
Move it.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 202381, a resolution authorizing the outfall repairs needed at Wesley Lake.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-82, a resolution authorizing the replacement of a hanging heater at the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-83, a resolution amending a contract with Warshaw Generator for the installation of a generator at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Move it.
Second. Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-84, a resolution authorizing the execution of a shared services agreement with the Township of Neptune for geese management of Wesley Lake.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-85, a resolution entering a memorandum of understanding for trap, neuter, and release program with Monmouth County SPCA.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-86, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the City of Asbury Park to enter into an amendment to the subsequent developer agreement with Asbury Partners LLC and Kay Hovnanian Holdings NJ LLC, including Kay Hovnanian's Baltic and Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and Kay Hovnanian's Aegean at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC, the urban renewal entities formed pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-87, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a second amendment of the subsequent developer agreement with AP Block 4001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC to extend the outside approvals date in connection with the development of property located at 4001 Lots 2-15, currently Block 4001 Lots 2.01, Lots 2.02, and Lots 2.03.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-88, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Asbury Park authorizing the City of Asbury Park to enter into a supplemental subsequent developer agreement with Asbury Partners LLC and 200 to 210 Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal LLC to erect and use certain tent structures and a storage structure at the Asbury Hotel located on Block 4104, Lot 13, and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-89, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Asbury Park to authorize default notices to Madison Asbury Retail LLC with respect to the Casino Building and Power Plant Building for failure to meet its obligations under the subsequent developer agreement between the City of Asbury Park Madison Asbury Retail LLC and Asbury Partners LLC dated June 1, 2010, and the easement agreement between the City of Asbury Park, the New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office, and Asbury Partners LLC dated January 15, 2004.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-90, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Sunset Lake Commission.
Pamela Lambert.
Pamela Lambert.
Move it.
Second.
With a term to expire 12/31/2024.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you.
Getting back in the game, Pam.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-91, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Wesley Lake Commission. The appointee is Barbara Lozinski with a term to expire 12/31/2025.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2022-492, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the City of Asbury Park to enter into a subsequent developer agreement with Asbury Partners LLC and Somerset Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC regarding residential development on Block 4105, Lots 1, 3, and 4, and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now into ordinances. Ordinance for introduction, we have 2023-1, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Kay Hovnanian's Baltic at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC concerning property located at Block 4003, Lots 1, 2, and 16 on the tax map of the City of Asbury Park and granting a tax exemption with a public hearing date of January 25, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-2, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Kay Hovnanian's Cove at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and Kay Hovnanian's Aegean at Asbury Park Renewal LLC concerning property located at Block 4003, Lots 12, 3, and 14 on the tax map of the City of Asbury Park and granting a tax exemption with a public hearing date of January 25, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-3.
Three more, Lisa.
Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park in the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the special assessment of certain wastewater, stormwater, streetscape, utility, and other infrastructure improvements on Block 4003, Lots 1, 2, and 16 Baltic within the Asbury Park Waterfront Redevelopment Area and establishing a mechanism for payment of the cost thereof with a public hearing date of January 25, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson. Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-4, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park in the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for special assessment of certain wastewater, stormwater, streetscape, utility, and other infrastructure improvements on Block 4003, Lots 12, 13, and 14 Aegean within the City of Asbury, within the Asbury Park Waterfront Redevelopment Area and establishing a mechanism for payment of the cost thereof with a public hearing date of January 25, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
2020, ordinance 2023-5, bond ordinance, amending and supplementing bond ordinance number 2018-57, which provides for acquisition of and the payment of the purchase price of real property and construction of a firehouse heretofore finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Asbury Park in the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey on December 27, 2018. To amend the description, increase the appropriation by $18,500,000 and to increase the authorization of bonds or notes by $17,619,047 with a public hearing date of January 25, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yep.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Before you motion, Brad, I have to ask you a question. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone has anything else, we're on to adjournment.
Move to adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.